There's a lot of that.
Are these people that were rounded up?
Yeah, that's what I was wondering. Where did you round them up at?
It's a long story.
Alright, I'm gonna call this meeting of the Sweetwater City Council to order. Ask Councilman Lee to do the invocation and then Council Castro to lead us in the pledges.
You'll join me in prayer. Father, we pause to thank you for this day and for the changing of the seasons. We're thankful for that, that we live in a country that we can have life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. We're thankful for your graciousness toward us and your love for us and for your provision of Jesus Christ as our Savior. I pray this morning that you'd allow us to deliberate in freedom. You'd allow us to have the wisdom that you give us richly. And you'd allow us to use that in our deliberations. That we might do things in accordance with things that will be pleasing to you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you all for being here. We'll now move to item four, which is discuss, consider, and act upon approval of minutes for meeting held on October the eighth, two thousand nineteen.
Move to be approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll now hear from Chief Brian Frida on the recognition of participants in the first Sweetwater Citizens Police Academy. Good morning.
Good morning. With us today, we have a portion of the class that was our first group of attendees. And there you see the picture. This was a, something that's been, we've been in the works for now for a couple of years. And I was approached by Sergeant Davis, really wanting to take up the challenge and run with it. So we allowed him to do that. And he got it put together. We had some hiccups last year and we finally were able to pull it off this year. And so, for original group, we have a total of nine, I believe, that attended. And with us, we have four. And so I'll allow them to take some time to, if you have just a few seconds, let them tell you about the class, what they got out of it, and introduce themselves. I'm sure you already know all of them. And then we'll present them with a special token of our appreciation for being a part of the class and then a little photo op.
I'm Scott Morgan. Chief Frida asked me to have this meeting here, oh, I don't know, it was a couple of years ago, we started talking about it. And I said, sure, sign me up. A year goes by, another six months goes by, and I thought, well, it was just conversation. But it came to reality this year. And in October, Tuesdays and Thursday nights, we got to meet. And I tell you, it is with newfound respect that I have for the police department. These officers have to deal with the lowest end of society. The drug dealers and the people that are hooked on the drugs. And it's just the lowest of the low, and they have to be on top of the law in order to be able to get good search and seizures. But it's amazing newfound respect that I have for the officers, and I appreciate the opportunity to attend.
Hello, Chris Castro. And no Dr. Peak, we weren't part of a sting operation. Got us to come to that. Echo many comments that Scott Morgan made. Made a tremendous amount of respect for the group that you've got here that's protecting, serving Sweetwater and the community. We learned a lot about what they can do, what they can't do. Answered a lot of questions. And certainly did not know all of what was involved of being a police officer and what you had to go through to become a police officer. And they go through quite a bit of training, not only physical but mental. And there's only probably a select few that probably can do that job. I guess that's my, we do what we do and they do what they do. But it's a very good program. Couple of comments that were made, I think, during the classes. Is it kind of regret being the first group that goes through this course? Because we were the guinea pigs, we were the ones they were training on. And so this program's only gonna get better, and I hope that y'all would continue to support it. Thank you.
I'm Ted Basie. I've had opportunity to work with our police department on a couple of occasions lately on account of our gun business that we have with TJB Outdoors and the Medicine Place. And as they've said before, what our police officers go through on a day-to-day basis is something that the community really doesn't recognize and understand. And I really think this course, this time with them, is gonna connect our community more with our police department. It was an incredible, incredible four weeks that we got to spend with the guys, with the different portions, from whether it was our district attorneys to what they have to deal with just on-site. It was a fantastic eye-opening experience. And like I'm echoing with what these guys say, continue it. Get all of the people in the community that you can involved in it. And I think it'll make our community a better place. And just thank you, Ryan. And Clint Allen got me kind of last. He came and talked to me and asked me if I'd be interested about a week before it started. And man, yeah, I wanted to be part of it. So I think anybody that's gonna be asked will be part of the program.
Teak Hamilton, I was the youngest guy up there. So it was a lot of fun on my side of getting to hang out with these guys. I definitely echo what they said about all the whole experience. But just to give you a picture of the course, we had nine different nights and they had almost two speakers every night. And to me, the professionalism of the guys and the ladies presenting was what gave me a new respect, not just for what they do, but how they do their job on a regular basis and in dealing with the community. Because I don't like talking in front of people. And so I can't imagine that very many other people like doing that. But they came in and gave us a wealth of information where you were taking notes, you were wanting to know what was going on. And then they said, here's my number, if you ever need anything, call me. And so that was really cool to know that you have that connection, that personal connection. You don't get that in a lot of towns, so thank y'all for having it.
Like they mentioned, they went through everything from our crime stats, our organization, how we're structured, to use of force, search and seizure, prosecutorial discretion issues and considerations, communications, what goes on behind the scenes with the dispatchers, taking a nine-one-one call and answering the regular phone at the same time. I mean, I think they really gained a whole new experience, especially how quick something can turn on you on a dime when they were looking at the wrong, the business end of a taser. They realized just how quick things can go south on you. Because I believe one of y'all had the taser and you were surprised just how quick things can go south and somebody can get that away from you. And so, like I said, this is our first effort. We hope to make it only better. And we hope to be doing two of these a year. We'll try and kick off another one in spring, for first part of the year, and then later in the year. And so with that, gentlemen, this is a challenge coin puzzle that the Sweetwater Police Department designed a couple of years ago. And I'd like for you to accept this as my appreciation for participating in our efforts.
Not if you got the taser.
That was a fun tool.
Item number six, public input. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Yes, ma'am, please.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name's Jamie Mena. I'm the Director of the Sweetwater Nolan County Health Department. And we are wanting to increase the price of our permits for food service in the community. And we just need to know what y'all think about that. Linda can give you some ideas of what's going on as in price-wise.
We have a special item on that.
It's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda, and so we can bring you up at that time if you'd like to make some additional comments.
Oh, so we don't do it now?
No, ma'am, not now.
Okay. We'll now move to item seven A, which is discuss, consider, and act upon financing options for the purchase of vehicles and equipment needed for various departments. Items needed for purchase have been approved through budget and are quoted through pricing, through a pricing call.
Do y'all have any questions? We went out for the quotes. Russell and Grant worked hard to get the quotes on the equipment and the vehicles. They came back kind of late last week. And they were some from the dealer financed and then First Financial Bank. We realized one of the dealer quotes was maybe they would do the whole thing, and so we asked for quotes from them. And I believe you have what we recommend that would be what we think best for the city right now. It's a five-year, two-point-four-eight percent annual installment note bundled for the whole equipment.
Option three, staff recommendation?
Yes, sir.
Go on with the lowest bidder and on the relation of the note.
Yes, sir.
I move that option three is presented on the sheet for post options for purchases.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Okay, we'll now move to item seven B, which is discuss, consider, and act upon approval of resolution amending the central rate schedule for changes in food service permit fees and clarification of certain other fees for the city of Sweetwater, Texas, for the fiscal year ending nine-thirty twenty-twenty.
It's your turn now.
Alright, well, I didn't really come to speak, but I came to answer questions. But I'll give you a little brief thing. We always had a fifteen-dollar one-time fee up until twenty-twelve. In September twenty-twelve, we went to the county commissioners, that was back when Don Ware was still Director, and increased it to an annual fee. At that point, we just went fifty dollars on retail, twenty-five on temporaries. So now we're coming to ask, and this is a learning thing for us as far as who to get approval for now. So this is our first time being in front of y'all. But the deal is, is we are still below, way below area counties as far as their prices for food permits. And so we want to try to go up. We're still not gonna go up completely to where they are because of the big difference. But we do want to increase our retail food service permit from fifty to a hundred a year and our temporaries to twenty, from twenty-five to fifty a year.
And y'all inspect most of these places how often?
Well, the city ordinance that's set tells me we have to go six months.
Six months?
So we go, we go every year.
So you got two visits.
Yeah, we go in once a year now for a yearly, and then we go every six months on, that's all food service establishments. And no, it's not.
Will the county commissioners court have to act on this also?
We went before them and they said, no. So just y'all. I'm not sure why last time, like I said, Don Ware was still the Director at the Health Department. So we just went in front of them. And so this time, it's kind of a different thing. But we did read in the ordinances where it did say something about the city council establishing, I can't remember.
It's in our fee ordinance.
Yeah, so.
So this is a regular part of the fee schedule?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Right, they do.
And increasing, we have kind of a motive behind the fee increases. We are looking to hire someone to do food service inspections. So we're trying to come up with a salary to help with that, so.
I move we approve the increase in the rate schedule for food services from fifty to a hundred, no, annually. In temporary.
Second.
All in favor?
What question, your motion also includes the other items that are mentioned in the fee schedule?
Yes. All in favor?
Thank you.
Approved. Now read the resolution into the record. Confirming and ratifying the central rate schedule for the various fees, license permits, and rate changes by the city of Sweetwater, Texas for the fiscal year twenty-twenty and adopting such central rate schedule. Got one more item and we won't have anybody here. We will now move to item seven C, which is discuss, consider, and act upon an ordinance amending chapter six of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Sweetwater, Texas entitled Animals and Fowl. Any questions for the chief? I think there are just a couple of items that got left out in the last one, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And so, to go along with a famous spaghetti sauce commercial, it's all in there. It's in there. Everything with the dog park, the rabies vaccinations, removal of the licensers, you know, the fees for licenser. And we even had to tweak it a little bit more about some things. We found some areas there where if we have an animal and it's left with us, we didn't give anybody a timeline in how we were gonna collect for that storage of that animal for a particular amount of time before it becomes ours and to either take the second chance or adopt out somehow. So that was all addressed in this last rewrite.
Move adoption of the ordinance.
All in favor?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, sir. Now read the ordinance into the record. An ordinance of the city of Sweetwater, Texas amending its entirety, chapter six, Animal Infowl, by adopting a comprehensive version of chapter six as provided for an exhibit A, making various findings and provisions related to the subject of animal care and control, providing for a repealer clause, providing for servability, providing for an effective date. We'll now move to item seven D, which is discuss, consider, and act upon proposal for supervisory control data acquisition system replacement submitted by Dedicated Controls for Texas Water Development Board and Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, water system improvement projects contingent on funding agency concurrence.
Finally, after about three years, here we are. The first one is a skated project. It come in a little over a million dollars to start with. We got with the vendor, we got it reduced down to the amount you see there is nine-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand, nine-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. This is gonna cover all the new skater for the well field, semi-water plant, and all the storage facilities around town. So I'm coming with a new skater pack instead of old Etonet stuff. We ask for y'all to approve the proposal.
All the well fields being taken care of with this?
Yes, sir. The forty wells plus a Highland pump station, plus booster A, booster B, and Oak Creek. And I don't know, mountain.
I move approval of the proposal that was submitted by Dedicated Controls.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Now move to item seven E, which is discuss, consider, and act upon proposal for water line replacement submitted by Roto, Inc., Texas Water Development Board and Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, Water System Improvement Project contingent upon funding agency concurrence.
Also, we ask approval of the water line award. We have a base bid of four-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars for the base. And this is gonna cover, as you see in the map out there, you got in front of you, it'll cover about, I think it's about four thousand feet. And also, we are wanting to you to award ultimate line item B for sixty-seven thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirty-six. And in order for y'all to, for us to do item B, we probably have to take about fifty, sixty thousand out of our water fund savings to complete that one. That one over there is, is a red line over there in front of Horace Street from Haley back to the radio station. That's in pretty bad shape, and we really need to get that replaced also.
I move we approve the water and water line replacement bid.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, sir. Okay, we'll now move to item seven F, which is to enter into a public hearing and hear a presentation from Mr. Dana Shoney, Director of Planning and Development Services for declaring structures on described properties within the city of Sweetwater, Texas to be dilapidated and/or deteriorated and unfit for human habitation.
Move we enter into a public hearing?
All in favor?
Aye.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is a presentation for some dilapidated structures that are in our community. This is a continuing program, and you'll see more of these, I believe, as time goes on. City staff has gone out and reviewed structures that I'll present to you this morning based on chapter seven, article six in our Code of Ordinances, which is our substandard structures, primarily related to structural standards, utility standards, fire prevention, and health and safety. And up on the screen, just to give you an idea, we had gone over these reviews. We had sent notification out to the property owners of the issues with the structures. We had notified or published in the paper on those dates, October twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, and twenty-eighth. And they're aware that there's a public hearing to bring their property up for this consideration for a dilapidated or dangerous structure. If the, and again, the companion item is the resolution to this. So this is just the presentation reflecting the structures. And then I'll come back to this a little bit. But basically, and more specifically, these are the things that we really look at when staff goes out there. And by the way, Danny Heine is here. And quite honestly, Danny's the one who's out in the community really looking at these structures. And so I wanna give kudos to Danny for doing a good job in continually working this program. And he's here to help me answer any questions that may, might come up for each one. But looking at technical codes, primarily building electrical, plumbing, gas codes, weather protection, if there's problems with the exterior, open areas for road and so, just weather, rain, that type of thing. And you'll see that all of these structures have that problem. And you can see that clearly from an exterior view. Fire protection, again, that goes without saying. Structural soundness, you'll notice on the pictures that there's some very, there's some big issues with the structures here. And ultimately, their health and safety issues for our community. For the neighborhoods that they're located in, this is staff review and opinion, they're blighting influences. And so we're asking you to consider through a resolution to declare them dilapidated, and that's in the next item. But if we go through the properties, there's six of them. This is three thousand and three West Broadway Street. There's a number of structures on this property. This is actually on our Broadway in a corridor area west. And just basically looking at these, that gives you a good idea that they've been vacant and occupied for a long, long time. These are fairly big lots, and what you don't see on here are probably a lot of debris also associated with this property. But this is clearly, just from an exterior view, and this is a number of structures on this property, it's in disrepair. This is at six-oh-nine Mira Street. Attempts have been made to secure it, any kind of material that we have.
I'm sorry, last time we did this, last month, we had a public hearing, is anybody here wish to speak?
Oh, yes, good point.
So if we could, technically, I think we have to do that even though it's...
Thank you.
I guess we can swear them in, but the ordinance requires sworn testimony on these structures.
Can you do that or is it here?
Sure, is Danny gonna testify also?
Danny, Danny had done the reviews, can you go up there and speak to each structure a little bit?
Okay, please raise your right hands. Is this testimony you're gonna give regarding the substandard structures, truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, to help you guide?
So go through each of them, then, if there's anybody.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak for or against this property? We can move on to the next one.
This is at six-oh-nine Mira. This is another property that's clearly, I mean, from the exterior view, it's got some issues with the walls. There's been attempts to secure it, you can see the openings, it's not weatherproof at all. I think the one on the right lower corner kind of gives a good depiction of this property and the disrepair that it is. I think that's probably the only pictures that we have. We'll probably have two for each property where you can see.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak for or against this property? If not, we will move on to the next.
This is one-oh-two West Sixteenth Street. It's actually located by Newman Park. There's a number of structures on here, and you can clearly see the roof. It's even harder to see here, but if you were right up, looking at it, there's holes in the roof. It's not keeping water out, it's not weather-tight at all. And it's in disrepair, pretty much every structure on... Pretty much every structure on this property, so it includes the main structure and any accessory structures on the property.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak for or against this property? If not, we'll move on to the next property.
This is at one fourteen Fisher Street, it's the main structure. Much like the property on Mira, you can see that the walls, it's been secured at times, but the, what you can't see, I guess you can see in the lower right is the, the roof is in disrepair. Again, it's not a weather tight structure, and there are certain structural issues here. It's been vacant and unoccupied for a number of years as well.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak for or against this property? If not, we'll move on to the next property.
This is, uh, twenty-four oh nine Bristol Drive. This has been a property that had a fire. We're to looking at the main structure and accessory structures. Again, uh, you can clearly see, it's, it's unsecured, uh, there are some structural issues. Certainly not weather tight or rodentite. It's, uh, in disrepair as well, and I think that these pictures really do point the picture on this property.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak for or against this property?
Can we, can we ask a question of Danny? Whenever you, whenever you go after these properties, do you ever, I'm just curious, do you ever find people residing in them, or?
Not, not, not like.
Or vagrants?
Any of the ones, any, any of the ones that I want to hear what I have.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Yeah, you tell people that went through them and stole the property and all this.
I mean, this one appears that it could, yeah, and with the location of it too, uh, be conducive to people wanting to hide in there or.
Well, it is, but this one, uh, well, the inside is pretty well destroyed by fire. It's, uh, yeah, it's, it's pretty trashed inside. It'd be hard to step around without getting something stuck in your foot, it's, it's pretty. I wouldn't, I would say the other structure, like six oh nine Mira, you gotta look in before you enter this, we'll be honest. This one is, uh, it's gutted on the inside.
That's fair, thank you.
If not, we'll move on to the next property.
And I think this is, this is seven eleven Sam Houston. I think what's very noticeable is the roof. Clearly not weather tight. So when it does rain, um, clearly the inside is trashed. I believe, based on the roof, this has been another structure that's been unoccupied, really just kinda been left. And, uh, there's been no repairs made. Clearly in bad shape from a structural standpoint, um, and that's why it's brought before you today.
Anyone who wished to speak for or against this property? If not, we'll move on to the next. I guess that's it.
That's all the structures that I have for you, I appreciate the opportunity to bring these before you.
Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Um, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry.
To reference your question, Mr. Lee, uh, while Danny may not have come across them, there have been times where the police department has dealt with people that are, uh, like the motels on the east side of town, uh, where we've had multiple fires and other things like that. And they're, they're caused by the vagrants, they're hopping off the trains, if they're anywhere near the tracks, they tend to find those shelters. And so, yes, sir, we have had some, we have arrested people out of different structures that we know don't belong there. And so, yes, sir, we do, we do come across those.
How do you resolve that?
Well, we arrest them and then we try to make.
Overnight?
Yes, sir, they're, they're, they're housed at, at the county jail, and then we tend to pass the word on to code enforcement and to others, and we try to make contact with the realtors at the properties listed to let them know that the property's been compromised and they need to take measures to secure the property. And some do, and some just ignore them. So, to answer your que- I just wanna make sure you had a clear.
Appreciate that.
Close the public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. We'll now move to Item Seven G, which is discuss, consider, and act upon resolution declaring structures on described properties within the city of Sweetwater, Texas, dilapidated and are deteriorated and unfit for human habitation so as to require repair, rehabilitation, or demolition, providing a time for which the rehabilitate, repair, or demolish such structures and provide for the repair, rehabilitation, demolition, and removal.
I make a motion, we accept the recommendation of demolition of the properties.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now read.
I do have a question for Ben. If, where are we at on the last group of houses? The last properties we convened at our previous meeting?
Yeah, um, so we've gone out on a number of those structures, uh, the ones that we've been working with the municipal development district funding, excuse me. So we've got a bid out right now, actually four, I think five of the structures that, um, I forget the day that we're gonna receive those bids, but we had sent that out last week, so a number of them will be coming in. And you'll be seeing those because you have to act on those, uh, that bid award. And I'm thinking sometime in December, I just forget the day, but we've already got it out.
By bid on the properties, you're talking about bid for demolition?
Yes.
Or bid for purchase, huh?
For demolition.
Okay. Now, are, are these properties, the one, the previous group and this one, will they be put up for sale by the city or sheriff's sale, or?
Over time, um, because they're privately owned properties, these are not trusty properties that we went out to bid on, so what happens is that we go, um, get bids awarded, and then we, uh, as a city, have the authority to demolish those. Based on the cost of that demolition and removal, we put a lien on that property. What, what will most likely happen is it'll go up for back taxes. And when that happens, uh, we have, uh, the Texas Communities Group that actually, uh, puts those properties out for resale. So we may or may not receive funding on that, we'll get something from it, I'm not sure whether we'll get the entire cost of the demolition and removal, but we have the ability to resale, uh, to resell through that group to get them back on the tax rolls.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I now read the resolution into the record. Resolution declaring structures on described properties within the city of Sweetwater, Texas, to be dilapidated and are deteriorated and unfit for human habitation so as to require repla- repair, rehabilitation, or demolition, providing a time for which the rehabilitate, repair, or demolish such structures and provide for the repair, rehabilitation, demolition, and removal. City manager's report.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, thank you, counsel. Uh, at this time, I'll call Chief Madden up to talk about that first item, the emergency management exercise is being planned for currently, so Grant, if you can lighten us on that, please.
Absolutely. Um, what this is, Nolan County, um, is what's called an alpha pod. Should there be an outbreak of some highly infectious disease, things, anything along those lines, uh, even just, you know, something, um, as bad as, you know, a really bad case of, of flu that comes around and affects a lot of people, overwhelms the local hospital, it'll overwhelm other hospitals as well, so there really won't be any place to send them. Uh, should they run out of ventilators, should they run out of major medical supplies that are not available through their suppliers because of a, you know, system-wide pandemic or something like that? We have, uh, what's called a pod, point of distribution, is all P O D stands for. Uh, and we've got a plan, the health department has a plan, uh, through their, uh, public health preparedness system to use the Coliseum as a point of distribution, and we've used, I believe, Mr. Mayor's truck in securing water from Sams, and we've used that plan, uh, when the city water, uh, went out that one day because of a water line break. We've rehearsed this plan, we go over this plan routinely, uh, update it, upgrade it. Since, since we've done it last time, Nolan County has become what's called an alpha pod. Fisher County, Scurry County, Mitchell County, Coke County, Runnels County, uh, there's five to seven, I'm not exactly sure where two of them are right now, but they don't have, uh, full-time health departments. So what Nolan County has agreed to do is to receive the supplies from what's called the Strategic National Stockpile. Yes, FEMA's Big Brother-type stuff, they have this huge cache somewhere in Dallas, that they can pull equipment should we need it, should, you know, everybody along I twenty need it, or, you know, wherever. Smallpox vaccines, say smallpox breaks out again. I was one of the first ones not vaccinated, even born in nineteen seventy, I've not had a smallpox vaccine. Suppose they have to roll that out and everybody has to get the smallpox vaccine? Well, they're gonna need more than the vaccine, they're gonna need syringes and needles and things to give it, because, you know, in Nolan County alone, about fifteen thousand people are gonna need it. They would shi- send those supplies, as well as the supplies for the other counties around us, we would not be responsible for vaccinating those. Well, I think we are responsible for Fisher County. But they would need supplies to do it in their county. And their sheriff's department, their county judge, their emergency management coordinators have those plans set up for that in their counties, but we would receive their supplies. We would call them and say, your supplies are here, come and get them, they would bring an armed security detail in a pickup truck and load the pallet, and off they would go to their county. Then, we would do, um, our stuff, our, our point of distribution, point of distribution, and, and that's what we're practicing, it's a full-scale exercise somewhere in the future, uh, hopefully in the spring when it's warmer, where we send everybody through, and, and the beauty of Sweetwater, when I was public health preparedness at, at Nolan County Health Department, before I became training officer or chief or anything here, I walked into the sheriff's office and it was, um, uh, Renefeld, Donnie Renefeld. I said, I need to see your plan for running thirty thousand people through, you know, we need to sit down and come up with a plan for running thirty thousand people through the Coliseum parking lot, and he's like, there you go. And he showed me his plan for the roundup, and that's exactly what we set it off of. All the traffic flows are the same, we figured out what works, what doesn't work. Uh, and, and it's actually a really interesting plan to see, one, it's got social distancing, because that's a big, big key, if you're trying to keep smallpox or some infectious disease from spreading, you don't want all the people congregating in one area, because if one person has smallpox outside the building and people walk past them, all the people inside have smallpox, it's that contagious. Uh, the last case of smallpox in the United States was a man, actually a woman, who was in the hotel, in the hospital above the floor where the man with the, supposedly the last case was at. And he smoked at the window, out the window of the hospital, and the smoke, the heat from the smoke carried it up, and she got it upstairs. That's, that's how bad it can be. So it's got social distancing, it's got ease of movement, people stay in their cars, people are comfortable in their cars. Um, all you have to have is, you know, your address and how many people live with you, they give you the, the stuff. If it's an actual shot vaccine you have to have, that's a little different. Uh, if it's just prophylactic, uh, stuff, you know, pills, that's, that's, that's a, you know, a little bit different, uh, change in the plan, but we've worked really hard to perfect it, we've, we've gone to a lot of conferences, which is actually, um, where we learn a lot of this stuff, what works for other people, what doesn't work. We get stuff out of the classes, but actually talking to other people that have done it and set it up is, is where we get a lot of the true education of what works and what doesn't. Any questions? Sorry, I kinda rambled on. We just got back, the health department, and, and I know this is not up there, uh, but, uh, we just got back from Anderson, Alabama. Todd Donham and I were two from the fire department. Uh, Todd went with the health department, and FEMA pays for you to go to this class, they pay for everything. I think I had to pay two baggage fees, I, I checked a bag, sixty bucks going and coming, or thirty bucks going and coming, but, they take care of every other cost, and we had two other healthcare coalitions there, one from Puerto Rico and one from Iowa. And, and yes, the class was great, it was on healthcare coalition leadership, uh, but talking to the other groups. Iowa is exactly like us, huge expanse, very few people. Puerto Rico is quite the opposite, Puerto Rico, the entire island of Puerto Rico is just bigger than Mitchell, Nolan, and Taylor Counties put together, but they have three point six million people. And every other year, they deal with a major storm that wipes out something. Uh, and the things, the deal, that, their biggest issue is, uh, they have Fresenius kidney care there, and fifty-two gallons of water per patient, per treatment. And how many, well, I think they have seventy-two kidney care stations there, and, and people coming through all the time, twenty-four seven. You know, the, the issues that they deal with, seeing that was a really very educational, uh, class. Had no idea.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
You're good.
Thank you, chief. Uh, second item to discuss is, uh, the civil service meetings that will be started, have started already with the Sweetwater Fire Department. If, if you'll recall, uh, we had civil service meetings a year and a half ago or so, probably, with the police union, the police association, I should say. And so now, it's, uh, the fire department association is up to bat, and we've had two meetings with them, their leadership, uh, up to this point. The third meeting will be held, uh, December nineteenth. And so we'll make our way through the holiday season into the spring, and, and at some point in the spring, early summer, probably, in conjunction with, with the budget, uh, season, we'll be bringing y'all back, hopefully, a negotiated agreement with the fire department. Civil service is, is meet and confer, is what we are, both on the police and the fireside. That's a lot different than, uh, than, uh, collective bargaining, which some cities around Texas have. The, the collective bargaining's a lot more stringent, we wanna, we wanna do everything we can to stay away from that, meet and confer is a a little more, I wouldn't say, um, um, what's the word I'm looking for? Informal, but compared to collective bargaining, it is. What you do is, is literally meet with the association and confer with them about items that you've agreed to confer with them about, and then, and then just have a, have a good, healthy talk about what can be done and what can't be done. A lot of those items are administrative, uh, as you can imagine, especially on their side, a lot of those items that they wanna, uh, have at the table are, are financial. And we'd have to look at our budget to see if that's something that we can do or not. But what I've seen come out of these meetings are, are better, more trusting relationships, more open and honest dialogue with the leadership of, of the fire department and the police department. A lot of good can come from that, and in my mind, it's those intangibles that are, uh, that are really, really valuable outcomes of these types of meetings. And of course, on, on their end, they, they wanna see raises, and they wanna see those kinds of things, and, and if I was a firefighter or a police officer, that's what I'd wanna see as well. But I just wanted to, to alert the, the council that, that we're in that process. We're starting a little early, but I think that's okay, it'll give us more time to, to talk and, and to, to meet than to confer, until we bring something back to the council for full ratification. Like I said, sometime in late spring, early summer timeframe. Uh, the liquidation auction for the city of Sweetwater was a success, we hadn't had one in, in several years. There, there were some items that remained unsold. Russell, I think, uh, on the solidway side, a couple of the trucks did not sell, and maybe on the police side, a couple of the older sedans. One car did not sell, but, but otherwise, it was, uh, it was in my estimation, Russell's estimation, Patty's estimation as well, a, a success. And something we'll, we'll look and keep doing, uh, you know, as the need arises. We ended up, uh, selling twenty thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars and twenty cents worth of items. And so, uh, so all accounts, it was just kinda junk sitting out there in our eyes, and now we got twenty thousand dollars to show for it, so, a success all around. And, Mr. Mayor, that's all I had.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Motion for adjournment.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
All right, gentlemen.